Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's now 7:00 PM. I'll call the public budget hearing and the special town meetings to order. I'd like to start off this evening with a pledge of allegiance, if you wish to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The process for this evening will be for us to present the budget to you, and we'll go through that in some light detail. At this time, I'd like to ask the Court Judy McCollin to present the budget.
Okay. First of all, I need to ask is everybody that has signed in, A, you don't have to be a registered voter, but you'd have to be eligible to vote, which means that you've lived in the town of Grand Rapids for at least 28 days. Anybody that hasn't that's signed in? Okay, then we're good to go for our counts later on. Budget for 2015. First of all, it's on the front sheet. It's summarized. We are looking at projected revenues of $2,614.46. The expenditures, we are looking at estimated $3,160.46. With that in mind, the budget was balanced by using $546,000 out of our general fund. Down below that, if you look, this is our estimate for the 2014 year. We started the year with general fund of $794,101. Our projected revenues and projected expenditures are guessing what we're going to do through the end of the year. And with that in mind, it looks like we should be putting some back in, and we are projecting that our end-of-the-year budget will be at $1,047,192. So to balance a budget, like I said, there is $546,000 that will be coming out of that. That's been kind of the plan over the last few years that I've been here, that we have built that general revenue for a year like this where we knew that we needed in order to balance the budget. And $500,000 is roughly what everybody is comfortable with having as our backup to pay the bills throughout the year in case there was an emergency, that we needed money, in case we have one of our dump trucks blow a motor and we have to, at the last minute, purchase something. In your packets, you have sheets. I apologize, they're small print, but there's a lot of information on here. You want to take a few minutes to look through it. It is the total breakdown of our revenue and expenditures, line by line. And if you, I guess if you have any questions, or if there's anything that the board wants to add to it.
Will take about three, four minutes for you folks to prove it. I know that's not a lot of time, but maybe if you get a chance, or if you come up with some questions, we certainly are willing to try to give you the reasoning behind them.
Five, September and all of October.
We had five meetings.
And just as a caveat to it, the board met five times on this budget as we worked through the numbers on it, made the changes, and made the decisions that we felt were prudent.
Are we allowed to ask a question?
Yes.
Oh, I'm just wondering, why is such reduction in the highway aid? In the residency?
Remember the side highway aid? Yeah, which page is that on? First page, second?
The first page is the residency.
Okay. State transportation aid are you referring to?
Yeah, well, other highway aid.
Highway aid.
It was 316,000 and now it's zero.
Oh, okay. That was 316,000 we got back last year. Last year's road construction project was Town Line Road, and that was done in conjunction with the village of Port Edwards and the town of Saratoga. And 316,000 was part of, was the grant that we got from the state.
The state aid by itself is up slightly, about $8,000 for state road aid. State's transportation aid was up just slightly. Go ahead, Mr. Head.
I'm particularly concerned with the road expenses, too. And I'm on page five of the expenses.
Okay.
And I see the road construction expenses was reduced $73,187, and I also see that the road maintenance expenses was reduced $20,000. What's included with road maintenance expenses?
Seal coating, et cetera.
Okay.
Light striping.
Filing.
No, no. Crack filling, patching, if you seal coated a road. We did run down the new construction budget, quite simply because the majority of our main roads are in good shape now. And we've been working on this for 20 years to bring those up to par. We have a few more roads to do, and we will certainly soon be having to do some of the older subdivisions that are 30 years old or so that our roads are deteriorating in them. So usually those we can do as overlays rather than rebuilds. And the 260,000, that way up?
226.
226. Will go a long ways for new construction.
I also want to take into consideration that the Town Line Road project was a very big project this year, last year.
And?
And it was actually about three years' worth of road projects.
Right. There is outstanding loan on that for $100,000 a year. So if you think about it, we're paying $100,000 for that road, so you could call that road, and then 226. So in reality, we've got about 330-some thousand in road. We have five years to pay that loan off.
Yeah.
Five years.
Or four years, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
I see that a 14% increase for public charges for garbage.
Yes.
Is the contract going up as far as garbage expense? Are we just raising the cost before the contract goes up?
We did go into contract, and the committee, Bill and Patty from Garbage and Recycling, did put out a RFP for, request for proposals for the services, as our contract with Viola was up at the end of this year.
So did they raise the price?
They, unfortunately, they were the only provider of a quote for us, and their prices were up, what did it turn out to be, 13%? Bill?
Well, yeah, but we haven't got a contract yet. We, $115 last year, and this year, I think, we're projecting $131 per residential pickup.
What Bill means by we don't have a contract yet is we haven't signed the papers. We have a couple of issues going back and forth between attorneys on the final language of what the contract will say, but those are minor details. But we're pretty confident that the rates are what they're going to be. And it's unfortunate that it's a rate we had a very good rate for a number of years, but it's up slightly.
And the original contract was signed in 2008?
Right.
Is that correct? So from 2008 till now, that's the increase.
We increased it once since 2008, and then this would be the second.
All right, we'll call the public hearing portion of this meeting closed then, and we'll move on to the special town meeting. That's the bottom part of your sheet that you had in front of you. First item on the agenda is to approve the April 15, 2014 annual meeting minutes. Motion by, is it Shirley?
Yes.
And seconded by?
Forrest.
Mr. Forrest? Any discussion on him? Hearing none, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye and aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Okay. Item two is to approve the total 2015 highway expenditure budget, which exceeds the state requirement of 5,000 per mile as per section 82.03-2, which means that basically if we exceed that amount, we need to ask this group four permission to do that. And the highway expenditure is on the?
In your package, it's a sheet that looks like this. And the highway expenditures include the road maintenance, the town garage, equipment maintenance, fuel, the snow and ice labor, salt, sand, all that type of stuff, road maintenance labor, the fringe benefits, the road construction budget, 50/50 bridge and road aid that we do with Wood County, our street lighting, any capital outlay, and then also the debt service. And if you look down below, the debt service for 2015 will be $213,993, but only $174,493 is part of the highway expenditures, which gives you a total of $861,091. The town board has always asked to have that set at, say, $50,000 higher. It's not that we are planning on spending the extra $50,000. It is not that we have, the board has any intention of spending the extra money. And since I've been here since 2007, we never have. What it is, is in case something would happen, in case we would have a tornado come through this town, and we knew that it was going to exceed our estimated projections, we would have to call and hold a special town meeting like this in order to send our crews out, or to rent equipment to come in and assist, or anything like that, in order to do that. Just to be on the safe side, they always just ask that the residents approve it at, say, $50,000 higher, just in case of an emergency. And like I said, it's never been spent. There's no plans of just spending it on something that's not in the budget.
So along the chart of it is, we need to approve either the $861,000 or the number slightly higher than that. And, you know, I'm okay either way. It doesn't really matter. As Judy said, we haven't exceeded that for many, many years, and when the time comes that we have to, we'd figure out a way to do it. But one way or the other, it doesn't matter to me. Did I see a hand up? Mr. Head?
I made a motion. We set the 2015 highway expenditure limit at $925,000.
Mr. Head has made a motion. Is there a second? And I think Fred Camacho?
Frank.
Frank.
Camarada.
Camarada. I'll get it right. Camacho, I know Camacho. Has seconded. Any discussion on the motion to setting the highway expenditure to a capital maximum of $925,000?
I just like to say, and I'm only known as this because I think that's a good time to have a special town meeting, when there's an emergency like that, and I'm sure the people will come through. I think just to put it in there to avoid a meeting is not good.
As I said, I'm acceptable to either format. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I would like a hand motion for those that are in favor of upsetting it to $925,000. Think a five by saying, by raising your hands.
$925.
All right. Hold them up there.
It may have been easier to go the other way and subtract.
I have 27 now.
Me, too.
Somebody change your minds.
All right, then 27 for. Those opposed, now raise your hand, please. Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item three, adopt the 2014 pound tax levy or mill rate to be paid in 2015 pursuant to section 60.10-2 of those Wisconsin state statutes. And you know, then on our sheet, it is a?
Can I work to this one?
Change from 2014 of $2.87 to 2015 payables of $2.89 per thousand, which is two cents increase. Less than 1% this year increases, a 0.7% increase in the towns portion of the tax rate. You will see the other rates listed on the papers for, just for informational purposes. Grand Rapids share of taxes on a $130,000 home will be $375.70. That's what the town will keep out of the total that's paid on your taxes, and with your garbage rate, that accounts just over $500 per $130,000 home. Does someone wishing to set the mill rate? Mr. Head?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few things to say. My name's Ron Head, and I live at 2521 Blueberry Lane. Good evening to the board and residents. When we got our 2013 tax bill, it was $2,531. That's a lot of money. Upon further investigation, and I'm guessing most of you know this here, but maybe some people that are watching on TV don't, Grand Rapids portion of that was $389, plus there was $115 on that for garbage collection and recycling. We have $140,000 assessment on our property. At the current $2.89 per thousand tax rate, we're expecting to pay around $400 bucks for 2015 and Grand Rapids taxes. If I divide that by 12 months a year, that's 34 bucks a month. Garbage and recycling went up this year a few bucks. It's $131 now. That's 11 bucks a month. So add them up, that's 45 bucks a month for Grand Rapids taxes and recycling. Just for comparison's sake, if I stop that quick trip and get a morning coffee and an afternoon soda, I'm going to spend about 60 bucks a month on it. My wife's cell phone bill is 65 bucks a month. We got charter cable, we got a bundled situation, which is TV, internet, and telephone, plus we got some premium channels. That's 220 bucks a month. I'm thinking Grand Rapids is a pretty cheap place to live. This is my, this meeting here, there's only one of these a year, I think, right?
Yep.
But to get to this meeting, there's, you heard Arnie say, there was five of these to generate this discussion tonight. That's where, that's where these, the nuts and bolts of the budget are decided. I've been to, this is my fifth or sixth year that I've attended these things. I'm going to guess that I've attended about 90% of those meetings, and I'm going to also guess that about, at 90% of the ones I attended, I was the only one there. But just quickly, this is what I learned this year, that some of the things that they talk about in these meetings, and I by no means have them all, but this is just what I wrote down for a few of them. Judy was informed by Central State Health Insurance that our premium rates for two young single officers that missed no time would increase 17%. She challenged it, but she lost.
It was security health.
I'm sorry.
Not Central States. I just don't want to miss them.
Our InfoTech, is that right?
InfoTech.
Is a, our computer?
Call for support.
Okay. Is cheaper than 90% of the comparable vendors. Epi pens cost 200 bucks a piece, and we've used quite a few of them this year. Don probably has a number on them. And we, basically on account of the beads. We've tried to recover that cost, but we can't figure out a way to do it. We're doing this as a service to save our residents. We don't have to have tornado sirens or streetlights, but we do. That's in the budget. Fire trucks rust out. That was, you know, I figured a fire truck, you wash them suckers every time you take a trip, but they rust out. A significant, there's a significant dollar value in the budget for corrosion repair on some of our vehicles. Blueberry Lane, the lane, the street I live on is, the pavement on it is 40 years old. It hasn't been touched, except for plowed. You know, there's no maintenance on it, and it's getting to the point that it's really exhibiting somewhere. I also understand that in Bill Clendenning's neighborhood, there's roads there that aren't paved. Now, I'm not advocating that we do Blueberry Lane or pave roads in Bill Clendenning's neighborhood, but I'm submitting that that's, we're probably not the only ones that we have there. There's probably more of those situations around. In spite of that, we reduced our road construction budget by $73,000. It was 100, but we salvaged a few tens of thousands to increase that. Our road maintenance budget is down $20,000, and our fund balance is down, in order to balance this budget, is down $546,000. All these board meetings that I attended, and I don't just mean this year, but for the past five or six years, I watch these, and they do an excellent job. I've watched them, and they struggle. They struggle with maintaining the status quo. They struggle with moving ahead a little bit. They struggle with falling behind. But all those boards, I sense that their goal was really to maintain the status quo or do some reductions. There's not many times that we're moving ahead. That's my sense. I'm concerned that we have a difficult time maintaining the status quo. There's nothing in this 2015 budget that I disagree with, and I'm disappointed that the budget is maybe more frugal than it should be. So where am I going with all this?
Yeah, we're kind of wondering the same thing. Are you making a motion, or what are you doing?
I'm going to get there. And so, let's see if I get this in the right order here. If we change the budget by $10,000, either up or down, it's going to cost, on a $100,000 assessment, if you've got a $100,000 assessment, it's going to cost two bucks a year. Two bucks a year to change the budget, $10,000. My proposal here is going to increase, is to increase the budget $100,000 from what was presented tonight. That's 20 bucks a year. You know, I'm just, I know these guys want to do a good job. They do a good job, but I think we're really too frugal. We got to move ahead here a little bit, and I think 20 bucks a year ain't a lot to move it ahead. Somewhere, next year's budget, I think, is going to be a son of a gun, because we aren't going to have the general fund balance that we have this year to balance the budget. The roads aren't going to get any better, and there's a want list that, I don't even remember what was all on it, but there's quite a few things on it. Before I get to the motion, I want to offer you this. If you think your Grand Rapids taxes are too high, I suggest that you attend some of these budget preparation meetings, and just listen to the struggles they go through to get to where we are right now. If you think your total taxes are too high, maybe you should consider entertaining a conversation with another taxing authority, like the school district, or mid-state, or Wood County. So my motion is going?
Wait, before you make a motion?
Got to be clear.
May I clarify one point of what you mentioned there? While I very much appreciate that you want us to invest more in the town, if you make a motion to increase the levy, or, you can increase the levy. The levy is what it is. We are not allowed to go above and beyond that. We're, our hands are tied. You can increase the tax rate, but in order for you to make a motion for us to increase the tax rate, it, we would have to use more debt service in order to recalculate and keep the tax levy at where we're mandated to be, because there's a special worksheet that the clerk has to compile and complete.
And we can do that, right?
It's, I don't know that.
And I put Judy on the spot here, because I told her I probably wasn't going to do this tonight.
I would really?
A loan would have to be taken out within the next couple of days, because we would have to, we would have to take out a loan, know what the payment was, and the payment would have, would be then included in our property tax revenue.
Let me at least make the motion. I will hold for a second, and then we can have some discussion, and maybe it fails on account of that. Would that be acceptable?
Well, we had already borrowed $146,000 in order to help with this debt service that Kathy is already talking about.
I mean, you're entitled to make any motion that you like, Ron. If there's no second to it, then?
I understand.
You understand.
And that's, I, at least, I'll make the motion. I at least, I at least appreciate a second for discussion purposes, and then if this thing isn't admissible, that's the end of it, you know? But maybe it would be admissible. I don't know. So, so anyway, my motion is that we adopt a tax levy that is $100,000 more, which is the same as a mill rate that is 10 cents more than the board has presented us with tonight. And I'm done.
Mr. Head is making a motion, as you heard. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Paulson has seconded for discussion. And I'll allow some time for discussion of it, but as this board has sat down, and I'll let each one of them speak to their thoughts on this. We've put the budget together. We can handle this budget. We understand where he's coming from. The town needs to keep borrowing to, it needs more money. The issue is, in my opinion, is not us generating the the more money. It's the state of Wisconsin, which is now surplus with cash again, start to return some of the monies to the towns that they took from us over the last seven or eight years. Maybe it's even longer where our shared revenue went from 400 some thousand dollars down to, what is it, 2, 360?
360 something.
We've lost probably $120,000 in shared revenue over the last number of years. That's where the money needs to come back from. Anybody else wish to speak to it?
How are we going to get it back?
I'm talking. They're listening, but that's about it. Anybody else wish to speak to that?
And part of our responsibilities of a town board is to struggle and to be frugal. Our town of Grand Rapids and this community is probably one of the most oldest communities in this area. And not all of them are, have really nice retirement funds and everything else that can support increases as such. So I believe that we're doing what we're, what we're, what you folks elected us to do. And we are trying to spend your money wisely and protect your investments at the same time and to continue. And I don't feel that, that we need to increase. That's my feelings on this, that we don't need to increase.
What I've done is to move us ahead.
Well, there's other avenues, just as one, to go out and bid the insurance is the 17% increase. We didn't go out, and shame on us for not going out and getting second bids on that. We could go and do other collaboration with surrounding communities as far as the internet or the computer software programs. There's other opportunities that we haven't, I don't think, fully investigated in order to try to save the town money and even to be able to lessen up that. So that's my take on it.
Anybody else wish to speak to it, or anybody in the front? Dan, you wanted to speak ahead for it?
Yeah. And for as much as I appreciate, Ron, your, your proposal, again, and I understand I sat through this, this budget, and it is, it's tight. I mean, we're covering our expenses, but there is, there, there's not a lot of extra in here. In fact, I don't think there's any. And for the long-term solutions for this town, we have a fire department, a fleet that is aging. We have a street department where the trucks are aging. Yeah, we, we did replace a grader this year. We are next year getting a used ladder truck, which is, is perfectly fine. I, I support that 100%. But when you look at the costs of some of these large expenditures that we are going to be seeing shortly, I mean, we're talking trucks of a half a million dollars, okay, to maintain our current fire rating, which affects all of us as far as our insurance rates that we pay on our homes. Okay? And I'm not going to get into the big details of it, but it does affect what, what class this fire department generates, affects each and every one of us who own a home. Now, I know we can't just all of a sudden, in one year, come up with that money. And I don't think in one, you know, over the long term, it's not budgeted, set aside just for those purposes. And I get how that works, you know, it goes into the general fund, and that's where a lot of this extra is going to. But we do have to look at the long term, and I think that's fiscal responsibility. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. But we are. Look around us. We, we, we have a very, very, I'd say, nice tax rate, you know, compared to the municipalities in the city you're in. But the long term is, we got, we got, we got to plan ahead. And right now, I don't think we are enough. But again, in saying that, a dime, I think is a march, you know? And I will be voting against it, but I appreciate it. And I think the concept and the idea is right on. Thank you.
Phil, did I see your end or not?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Kathy, or anybody, or anybody from the public?
I, the only comment I have, just to add to what I've already said, is that I really do appreciate your passion for the town and, and for investing in the future. You are at these meetings, and you are expressing that interest and that desire, and, and you're asking us to always be thinking ahead. But I just think it's too late at this moment to sit and, and, for me anyway, to look at exactly what does it mean? What debt service would we have to borrow in order to meet the parameters that the state sets on us? And then when we, because that's all it is, is basically telling us, use more debt service to then do what? And we haven't given that any thought. And so, I'm not prepared to be able to support the motion because I'm not prepared to be able to say, how can we fiscally, responsibly use that money? But it's not something that I'm going to forget. It's something that we should be thinking about over the next six months so that when we start the budget process next year, that, that, that idea should be in our heads at the start, not at the end.
Anybody else still there? Mr. Head, you have one little second here?
A second? No. Hey, and that was, you know, I was going to ask you where you were going on that. I thought you were going to vote for it until you got to the end. And that was the whole intent, you know? We, we got to start tipping off at these, at these issues we got because somewhere down the line, it ain't going to be 10 cents, it's going to be 50 cents. It's going to be a dollar if we don't chip, 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 you know? And, and I got into these discussions with the board, you know, it, it was too late to do a referendum. How do we get around this? I knew we were going to get to this point tonight. When, when, when they, when they were doing their budget meetings, they got to the point that they didn't have their budget together in time to even, if, if, if they wanted to do a referendum, it was too late. You know, now, you said, when we get going with our budgets next year, I submit we get going with our budgets next year in February, you know? To hell with this October, November, December timeframe, you know?
Yeah. Well, summertime, you, all right. All right. The motion has been made to raise it, and you heard the amount. Is there anybody wishing to support it? Raise your hand by signifying by saying aye.
Oh, my God, gross.
And those opposed?
I'm going to say Republican.
All right. And then, then that motion has failed?
I'm voting for both, by the way.
So is there another motion to set the tax mill rate at $200, $2.89 per thousand? Mr. Bob Pye, is there a second to that? Mike Ski? Anybody? And further discussion on the budget? Number 289. Any questions? All in. Hearing none. Glenn Vipley?
I'm going to be voting against it, just because I can, I, all the departments come in great. The police department was right on. But when the fire department come in with their wish list of $450,000, that's why I guess there's a lot of firemen here tonight. That was the wish list. I was against buying a used, a new, anything ladder truck because I didn't feel, in my opinion, we needed it. And we purchased one anyways. So I'll be voting against this because I think there's a lot of money in here. It's just a big tax and spend, like the first motion was. Tax the people and we'll spend it. And I think this is what this budget is. There was stuff put in this budget. Well, maybe we won't use it, but we're going to put it in there in case we do. So I'm voting against.
Mr. Head?
Hey, we got a wonderful fire department. I don't know, but I, I would not know, these are volunteer guys. They get $15 a call for however long it goes, 12 hours, 2 hours. It's cheap. Think of the alternative to not having a volunteer fire department. You think your taxes might be high now, you know, what's the alternative to that? The fire department generates income. We get, the, the contracts we have with Saratoga and Grant, we get $155,000 bucks from them for fire protection. I don't know that there's another entity in the town that generates that, that income.
Kathy?
I'm entirely disappointed in Supervisor Clendenning's statement.
I think it's, it's to the motion that's here.
Excuse me, I think I have the floor, and I'm allowed to state my opinion as you just stated yours.
And it's against Clendenning. It's not for the motion.
Every year, year after year, it's not that the fire department has, year after year, brought anything to this board, any different than, one year it might be road construction, one year it might be public works types of things, one year it might be police, it might be fire. But if there's a reason why there's several fire department members here, it's probably because of the disrespect that they get from a majority of people.
All right. Any other discussion on the 289? If not, we will take a stand, or a hands-up vote, all in favor of the $2.89. Raise your hand by saying aye. All right. Motion carries.
Motion carries.
All right. Rate will be 289 per thousand, and I thank you very much. The last thing on the item is to pursue the statute 60.10, print 1, print G of state statutes, establish the hourly rate to be paid for town employees who are also elected town officials. This would, would be setting the, the pay rate if, in the event that we had a catastrophe and/or sickness in the plow trucks that the other officials who have the ability to do it could jump in a truck and could assist with emergency services. It's, it's not been used for the, for, for, I can recall, over the last bunch of years. Just as a matter of fact, when we had the, what may have been a straight line winds or tornado event a few months back, I was working with the crew for three days. In theory, I could have asked for pay for that. I chose not because I am your town board representative, and I tend not to, to tax you any more than you already are. So the current rate that we have in the book is?
$14.93.
$14.93. So if somebody would, if you're going to make a motion, less or four?
Right. But I just want to, in the motion, in the December meeting, you guys set the, you decide whether you're going to increase our part-time rates, our whole worker rates, and those items. So if the motion is made, it would need to be at the current part-time rate because this part-time rate could increase. Or you can say, this is the set rate for the elected officials should they need to be used as under an hourly wage.
And as we've stated, we've not had to use that, and hopefully don't have to.
I'll make a motion that we set the hourly wage to be paid to town employees who are also elected town officials at the part-time, current part-time rate.
I'll second that.
Seconded by motion Kathy, seconded by Bill. Any discussion from anybody? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hands. Any opposed? And the nose? Anybody against? No showing. All right. That motion is uncarried, and we are done with our business this evening, folks, and I Motion adjourned. Mr. Tom Iser, seconded by
Mike Smith.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Here are both. Thank you very much.